Okay, I'm gonna call our meeting to order of December the 6th. Our invocation today is by myself, so let's bow our heads and have a moment of prayer. Lord, may your goodness and love be present amongst us today. Come bless us with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, we pray for unity. Build in us all a deep respect for one another. Lord, we pray for hope. Come stir your hope within our hearts and renew our faith. Bring hope for healing for all that are ailing. Lord, we pray for vision. May your vision fill our lives as we seek to improve the lives of the citizens of Wayne County. In Jesus' name, amen. Please rise and place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Every year at our December meeting, we have our reorganization of our board and we elect our chairman and vice chairman. And at this time, I'm going to turn our meeting over to our county attorney, Gordon Parker, for that purpose.
For the election of our chairman, are there any nominations?
Mr. Parker? Nominee of Ms. Barbara Aicott. That was my nominee, nominee also, Ms. Barbara Aicott.
Are there any others? There are no others, I will accept a motion to have her elected by acclamation.
So move them.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed likewise. Congratulations, Ms. Aicott.
Thank you.
Turn to you now.
We're gonna swish some chairs here. Congratulations.
Well, I would like to thank the members of the board for the nomination. I hope I can do as well as our former chairman.
Hopefully you'll do better.
Better. I love her.
Well, I'm gonna try to do it. But, Mr. Board, I think you do the vice chair.
I think you do.
Okay. Do I have a nomination to appoint the vice chairman?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to, for Chris Gurley to be our vice chair.
Do I have consensus on the vote for nominating Commissioner Chris Gurley as vice chair?
Come on.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. All right.
Madam Clerk, I have the distinct honor-
We need to ask for those opposed on that vote, please.
Do I have any opposed?
Madam Clerk, I have the distinct honor of presenting this plaque to our former chairman, Jared Arty, for being chairman of the Board of Wayne County Commissioners from December 7th, 2021 to December 6th, 2022.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving along. Do I have an approval of November 15th minutes?
So move.
All in favor, say.
Raise your hand.
I'm going faster than you are, aren't I?
That was the approval of the minutes. Who made the motion?
I did.
Thank you, sir. And it was unanimous?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any discussions or adjustments for the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Under the consent agenda, I would like to add number 11, a motion to approve or not resolution for fireworks display by hail artificers for Pfeifel on December the 31st, 2022. I'd like to add item number 12, approval of the sheriff's bond. And number 13, I'd like to establish a public hearing on December the 20th at 9:30 a.m. to receive public comment on a memorandum of agreement between the county and Wayne County Development Alliance for construction of two shale buildings at Park East. And then, under new business number one, I'd like to add on to the end of the motion to approve air methods and Sappirion Healthcare Solutions as the billing company for Wayne County EMS. This is subject to the contract being approved by the attorneys. That's all the changes I have now.
Thank you, Mr. Crumpler. Okay. I see a lot of familiar faces out in the audience and wealth from Northern Wayne. We have friends of, presentation by friends of-
First, we need to-
Date on the adjustment of the agenda.
Oh, yes, we do. Do I have a motion to vote for the adjustments on the agenda?
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a vote, please? All, okay, thank you. All right. Am I ready to go now? Special presentations by the Friends of Northern Wayne Library. Take your time.
I hope you don't mind me sitting, but it's easier for me to talk while I'm sitting.
No, sir, whatever's easiest for you.
Madam Chairman and Honorable Commissioners, today I'm representing the Friends of Northern Wayne Library, our group. My name is John Pippen, and I'm president. We have Wayne Jackson with me, who is our vice president, and Gene Evans-Millson, who is our secretary treasurer. Our group has been meeting for almost a year now. We've been meeting in the Fremont Town Hall as well as the Pfeifel Town Hall. I served three years on the Wayne County Library Board along with Mr. Williams before my term ran out, and as well as two years, almost two years, completing with Commissioner Ray Mayo. It was Commissioner Mayo's dream at that time to hopefully have a new library or new Northern Wayne Library before his term ran out. And as all of us know, Commissioner Mayo passed away, and his dream was not fulfilled. Well, Mr. Ray and I, the meetings would sit and talk about a possible new library in the northern part of Wayne County. And during those meetings, we would talk about the illiteracy that is in the northern end of the county, also the minority children that do not have access to computers or the internet within itself, and also the children that needed help with their homework that would get home at 5 o'clock in the afternoon and need to go to a library and would not be able to get there before the library closed at 6 o'clock in the northern end of the county, or have to drive 15 or 30 miles just to try to do some of their homework. The largest problem at that time when we were talking about that we faced that was between the Pfeifel and Fremont communities when it came to just talking about one library. But today, we come to you as a united front. We've met in Pfeifel, went with the Pfeifel Town Boards, we've met with the Fremont Town Boards, and they've been very receptive to one library. If you look around this room, you'll see, I think, a couple representatives from both boards that are here with us today. You've had a handout that was given to you, I think, hopefully each and every one of you got that. It was placed in the Pfeifel Library, and if my poor hands can open it up, if you go to the back of it, you'll notice, and if you get time, I'd ask you to just look through it. Most of it is dreams, if you had unlimited money to be able to, you know, put a great big, you know, new modern library together, and there's some examples of different ones. And we're not saying that to do that, but it was just something that was placed out there. But we asked the people to dream and think about what they would like in a new library. You know, libraries are not what they used to be. It used to be when most each and every one of us that were in here remembered Bookmobile would come by, and we would pick up a library book, and when it came back the next time, we would place that library book back and get another one to read. And that was all we really knew about a library. But today, libraries are so much more than, than just that Bookmobile. And there was 273 people that responded just in a one month period of time, so that is something I'd like for you to just take a look at, if you would. You know, today, we are offering our assistance to the board to help Mr. Ray's dream come true, whether it be to serve on the committee, help raise money, help find grants to hopefully find a way to have a new modern day library in the northern end of Wayne County. As I said, we've worked over, a little over more than a month to get people and talk to people and get some petitions together. Today, I'd like to present you with what we have from different areas within the northern end of the county. We've got 737 signatures here of different people around in the northern part of the county that is supporting, would like to support that. And the petition reads that we, the citizens of Northern Wayne County, North Carolina, would like to petition the Wayne County Commissioners to build a new modern day library in Northern Wayne County. In 2021, the Fremont Library was shut down due to possible mold and leaks in the building. This has left the Pfeifel branch, which is very small and has limited parking. Library programs must be moved offsite due to not being able to handle the number of citizens that wish to participate in the programs. As a citizen of Northern Wayne County, we look at the libraries in Goldsboro and Mount Olive and deserve the same quality of services. And I don't know who I need to hand that to, but thank you for allowing to look at that. And at this time-
We all wish for a new library.
And thank you for your time. Thank you for your time this morning. We appreciate it. If we can help in any way, please let us know. We're gonna continue to keep meeting and hopefully talking back and forth to each and every one of you. Thank you, Gene, for what I-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, before you leave, John?
Yes.
Yes, yes. When I approached you earlier pertaining to the library, and I asked you one question in particular, and I asked you where, and where would you want the library to be, and, you know, what would be the biggest asset? And you told me it's up to this board, whatever the board chooses.
The politics, we feel, is up to this board. It's like an example that our group, I use it, our group, and they've gone along with me. When I go vote, I live three quarters mile from Fremont. Well, the road where I'm at, I'm on the eastern side of the road, western side of the road goes to Fremont. The eastern side where I live at, I got to drive six miles to go to Eureka to vote if I want to vote. And I look at it this way, regardless of where the library is, if I need the services, just like when I want to vote and I need to vote, if I need the services, I'm gonna go regardless of where it's at. And that's the way I look at it. So the politics and so on, leaving up to y'all, because I know the politics will probably be in it, but the decision will be finally yours.
Is anybody else having more questions? Thank you, Ms. Pippen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, this time, I'd like IT Director Ryan Preble to come up, and he's, we're gonna have a presentation of a retirement plaque for Bill Coffey.
Good morning. I'd like to ask Bill if he'd come up, and Megan Donahue, if you guys could come up too? I think that'd be great. So this month is a special month for Mr. Bill Coffey. He is retiring as of December 30th after 22 years of service to the library. I've had the privilege of working with him for the last six years, and, you know, the sign of a true IT professional is don't get a whole lot of complaints about the people he serves, and I think that speaks volumes about the work he does. He's friendly, easygoing, and the staff love working with him, and can always call him for various things about the year, and he's on top of it. But I know this is a big day for him, a big month for him. I know he's got big plans for retirement, Little India's, he's got some traveling planned, but I certainly appreciate it. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the plaque before we get to go. From the Wayne County Board of Commissioners to Bill Coffey, in recognition and appreciation for your many years of faithful, dedicated service, August 1st of 2000 to December 31st of 2022. Thank you.
Ryan threw us for a loop this morning. We were having a birthday party, I mean, a retirement party for Bill this morning, a breakfast. I was at a conference last week, so I sent Ryan an email. Somehow, we crossed. But anyway, he called early this morning to ask us to come be here, but we started our party early, so we fed Bill this morning and celebrated him already. But as you all know, technology is an integral part of what we do at public libraries, and it's not a one and done. It's day in and day out, and our public library and the community that we serve could not have the quality of service we have without having Bill at the helm. He doesn't like this kind of thing. They're gonna celebrate you all day and the rest of your time here, Bill, but he deserves-
Don't call me that.
He deserves this recognition. He's been an excellent part of our library team and part of Ryan's team, too. We are so grateful for your service to our county and to the community that we serve, Bill.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now you get to give a speech.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but since they mentioned the Northern Library, I was the one that took care of all the libraries for their technology and everything. And to tell you the truth, it is wanting up there, and there's not enough space. You know, they get, they get the bottom of the barrel stuff, and they need an upgrade. So that's all I'm gonna say. Adiós.
All right, so everybody just look towards the clock, smile, one, two, three, and I'm pretty sure Joel's got it by now. Thank you.
All righty. Okay, now, moving on to item number three, I'll ask Barry to come up, and he'll introduce our grant writer, our newly acquired grant writing firm.
Well, let me give you a hand, sir. We've been waiting for you.
Good morning. Yeah, I do want to introduce our new grant writer, Tim Dusick, with TJD Consulting. He's actually come in from Texas yesterday, will spend a couple of days with us here to get to know our departments, talk about their needs, and what he can offer to our departments. And so, we're looking forward to working with him. Just a short time, I have been around him yesterday and this morning. I know he's gonna be a big asset to this county, to our departments. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Tim. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's really good to be here. Looking forward to working with you and your staff. After I finish here, I'm pretty much gonna have two solid days straight of meetings with department staff, and won't get to meet with everybody while I'm here, but we'll certainly schedule some virtual meetings after that. I want, I wanna find out what their needs are, what their wish list is. I want, I want them to dream big. You know, I heard somebody talk about dreaming, and I heard the first presentation, I even made notes, okay, library, youth development, bridging the digital divide, literacy. We need to go after everything that we possibly can. I wanna help this county expand its grants portfolio, and we'll, we'll think creatively. We'll shake every tree that we need to, to find a grant. There's lots of grants out there, and if there's a grant for that particular project or program that that department wants, I'll certainly do my best to find that. And I've, I've got over 20 years of federal and state grant management experience. I've been on both sides. I've been on the grant writing side as well as the managing grant side, so I'm really hoping to also help the county manage the grants that they have and ones that we acquire. It's not just I write it and I'm done with it, and, you know, good luck with it. I wanna, wanna help implement and, and make sure the grant is closed out properly as well.
Well, first of all, I wanna welcome you here. We've waited quite some time just to get the ball rolling with our grant writer. We advocated for this program at our last retreat, and we definitely want the staff to be involved, and the staff, whatever the staff's needs are. However, we're looking at it on a larger scale as well. We have other municipalities within the counties, and we want you also to be able to work with them. I know it's the first, you know, steps with everything. We definitely want not to leave out our municipalities throughout the county.
I'm actually meeting with a couple of your municipalities while I'm here also, so-
Great.
Hopefully one of those is Mount Olive.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
What is some of their needs that you've already met that we're looking at?
Well, I think there's, you know, emergency services is certainly an area of need that, you know, came out at least in initial meetings. And like I said, I'll be meeting with, who am I meeting with this afternoon? Your facilities director, your social services director, emergency management, and library, we'll be talking about library later on as well. So it's, you know, it covers a gamut. You know, you've got a lot of departments. And when I, when I looked at the departments that you had, it was like, yeah, I outlined a lot of, lot of needs for each department, basically. So we're gonna talk about that, and I wanna hear, hear from them, and feel for what they're looking for, what they need. I'll certainly give my recommendations as well, and if I find something that may be a little outside of the traditional programs that they have, we'll, you know, I'll certainly present that as well and hope that, you know, we can, we can help you get some money for your, for your constituents.
And one thing, you know, when you're meeting with our department heads, we've got some great department heads, but their place is full. I mean, you know, we've questioned in the past, you know, why aren't you going after grants? But they don't have time.
Exactly.
And that's the reason we've reached out to your firm to help us, because, you know, we know the grants are out there, but our department heads are just limited on time, especially some of the department heads. I mean, like DSS and Health Department, I mean, they're, you know, they're swamped 24/7.
Yes, sir.
But if you can help all the departments, and you did mention emergency management, oh, that's my passion. I've been a volunteer firefighter all my life, and, you know, anything you can do to help our, our first responders, we certainly would appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we are encountering currently are two major projects. One is our jail, our new jail that we're gonna be constructing, and the second one is our DSS health building. What we have encountered is that the cost of construction has skyrocketed. I mean, it's amazing. With DSS, the state of North Carolina assists us in regards to facility. But when it comes down to health departments, that's all on the county. No dollars coming from the state at all. So undoubtedly, we would like you to explore a possibility of grants to, for the construction of the health building, as well as the furnishings and the upfitting of all of those medical facilities there. So any, any help you can give us there would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, I, you know that the bipartisan infrastructure law passed earlier this year. There could possibly be some opportunities there over the next four or five fiscal years, so we'll certainly take a look at that. I appreciate the comment about the staff time that isn't there for grant writing, and I appreciate that, and that's why people like me exist, to take time off of staff to let them do their jobs and serve their, their customers and their constituents, and we fill in the, the needs of taking care of their grants.
Great. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you to you.
Chair Pierce, you stay away from him.
He already got in corner.
See how that turns out. Looking for great things there. Glad that he's here. Good job, Chip. I mean, really. It's a year in the making.
Difficult, but we got, we-
Got it done.
Yeah.
And moving on to your appointment committee now.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have some appointments today. These will all come to you as a motion. We want to appoint Mr. Robert Dingus to the GWTA, replacing Mr. Brent Heath, who's given us many years of service. The Wayne County Library Advisory Board would like to reappoint Ms. Hawaitha Jones. The County ETG representative to Goldsboro Planning Committee, Ms. Divana Moore. Wayne County Tourism and Development, Ms. Crystal Hale Michael. And finally, to the Wayne County Board of Health, Ms. Nanette Newcorn. All those will come to you as a motion.
All right.
So move.
All in favor? That moved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Now on to your consent agenda, having previously heard that at your prior meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
All approved of the consent agenda?
All right, moving on to new business. We have a motion to approve air methods going businesses Sappirion Healthcare Solutions as the billing company for Wayne County EMS. Of course, this approval, we're looking for, is subject to the contract being approved by the attorneys. And I think Dave Cudaback is here to discuss. Before you get started, sir, you get in line right behind the sheriff on that grant with the grant writer. The sheriff's already beat you to the punch, but you know, you jump right in there right behind.
I will exhibit patience throughout this entire process. Sheriff, you have first approach, sir. Good morning, everybody. Recently, we identified that our current billing company is not meeting the needs of our service, our county, and most importantly, our citizens. With a team of people, we got together, we put out the RFP process. We received five companies. We narrowed that down to three on, let's see here, October 14th, we interviewed three of the companies. It was unfortunately virtual, I'd much rather have face-to-face interactions, but it's what we had. And after that, we narrowed it down to air methods as the company of choice that we think will be best interest of our, our community, our service, and our citizens. Any questions?
Yes, sir. What stood out that they were the best company that you were looking at, you know, because I know all people have good presentations, but what stood out with them?
Yeah, great question, so here, up on our screen, we had what our priorities that we were looking for, competitive collection rates, really, we need to have good customer service, and so Air Methods stuck out in the stance of good customer service, they have a good protocol in place for how they answer calls, something that they went outside of that we hadn't really heard of is to assist people and navigate through the billing process, and I think that's important, because when you get a bill for medical costs, a lot of times, you have no understanding on what is this, what does it mean, how do I go about paying for it, is it a correct bill, and Air Methods has a method to assist our, our clients through that process, so we really like that. The other thing we were really cautious about is we didn't want somebody that was so big where we were just a number, and we didn't want somebody that was so small that they didn't understand the call volume and the magnitude we have here in Wayne County, and we think we found a good balance with Air Methods.
Madam Chair, what is the, was their collection rate based on their other customers?
Yeah, so their collection rate is in the ballpark of around 46%.
Compared to what we were?
So, the lowest we had was 38%, the highest we had was 62%, but that 62% was anomaly, there was a lot more to that process.
Got you. Now, is that, I'm talking to the current level we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, 38 to 62, but as Madam Acock pointed out, is there's a honeymoon period, everybody's gonna give great numbers, at the end of the day, we've got to see what they're able to do, and, and in order to find that out, I spoke with some companies that are using them, when they switched over 2015, 2016, with the two different companies, they saw a significant increase in their collections, and that's what we're looking for.
Let me hear that percentage again.
For...
For collection.
Yeah, 48%.
48?
Yes, sir.
So over half of our billing is unpaid?
That's correct.
That's amazing.
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it across the county, or is it considered, I mean, is it concentrated in certain areas, or how, I mean, how does that, as far as the breakdown of where are we getting bills paid?
Yeah.
You know, I really don't look at that, I look at all of our citizens equally, and, you know, I could dig into that information, it's just not something that I look at.
Got you.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty alarming, but I think that you'll see that across healthcare in general, but the other thing that we need to keep in mind is, we don't want to bankrupt our citizens, you know, if they have an emergency, it's already a hard enough time in their life, and EMS, it's an expensive service, but we want to make sure that we go about the billing process right, to go ahead and put liens on homes, and to send them to collection companies, and to mess up people's credit, I think we have to find that place in between where the service is paid for, but we're not putting such a demand on the citizens that is financially breaking them.
Well, agreed, but it's just, to me, it's a little shocking that over half of the cost of that service is not funded, except through the county tax base, basically.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's a big burden, that's, and even, an increasing burden, I had no idea that it was that low as regards to collection.
Yes, sir.
I think also you're being hit with the fact of Medicaid reimbursement is, is, is so low as well, is that correct?
It is.
So there are a number of factors.
There are, but from our side, Commissioner Dottry, the one thing is, is there's stuff put on our plate as well, so we get a number that says 48% collection rate, and then the next question that I have for these companies is, so how do we correctly increase that number? And we're constantly working, we never hit a collection rate number where we say, we're good, we're happy with this, there's a lot of things we can do in our documentation, there's a lot of things we can do in our care, there's a lot of things we can do in our obtaining signatures that will increase those numbers, and that's my responsibility to make sure that those things are completed. So the balance is, we want to make sure our documentation, our care, our transports, everything is absolutely perfect, that we're missing nothing on that, and then we're just gonna keep working and working to increase, increase those collection numbers, and we want to avoid bankrupting our citizens when they call for our assistance. It hurts my feelings to know that a 62-year-old male goes to the hospital having a heart attack and doesn't call the ambulance because they're worried about the cost of it, because during that transport, if he goes into cardiac arrest, there's nobody there other than their family members to care for them. I don't want people to be deterred from calling EMS because of the cost, we make a difference in that man's life if he arrests during the transport to the hospital.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Also, Dave, you know, just for the general public, just, just watching this, and there's a lot of people that watches our meetings, what is our call volume in Wayne County, so they can kind of put a, put a, put a eye on, you know, it's very expensive, but we have 11 EMS stations in the county, and you're in the process of putting the 12th crew on.
Yes, sir.
But just, just give us a kind of overview of the number of calls, not necessarily where they're at, just for the whole county, because like you say, you know, it don't make a difference where you live, in Mount Olive, Fremont, Goldsboro, one, one life is just as important as the other.
Yes, sir, so we will be around 22,000 calls this year.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two thousand, yes, sir. People underestimate how busy Wayne County is, people underestimate the acuity of the patients that we see here in Wayne County, and our call volume is increasing at a pretty steady rate of about 7% annually.
Well, you know, there's some days, you know, I, I monitor, not all the time, but I monitor the EMS calls, and fire calls, and it's, it's astonishing sometimes, you know, basically, you know, we've, we've sold the ideal with the new stations and all, our, our average response time is seven minutes, but what the general public doesn't understand sometimes is, with this number of calls, the trucks are not always in place.
That's correct.
Sometimes the call is, time is extended, but our, our EMS crews are, they're stretched out sometimes, because there's nothing to, to be listening, and, and almost every unit we've got is out on the call somewhere.
Yes, sir. It's become a regular occurrence to get down to one or two ambulances for the entire county.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And I just want the, the public that's listening, you know, we've sold the ideal of seven minutes, and, and that's if the truck, if the equipment is in the station, that's correct, but with the call volume, they're, a lot of times, they're just, they're not in place, and, you know, we apologize for the extended time, but we, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we've got to work with.
And you hear, you, you've made a couple comments in the fact that the ambulance is close by, even though it's not their district, they're close by, they're gonna jump on that call.
It's, it's amazing to, you know, particularly, a station will be toned out, and a truck that has just left the hospital or something, or going by six and picking up supplies or whatever, or four and picking up supplies, and they jump right in and say, we're closer, we'll take that call.
Yes, sir.
And I can remember when that didn't happen, they kind of, kind of were laid back, but we've got some pretty, pretty phenomenal people working for us.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
You know, probably some might be a little better than others, but take it all in all, we were blessed in Wayne County to have the, the leadership and the people that we have working for our EMS.
Well, we're all very lucky to have the people that are out in the field right now, they're hardworking, so I'm, I'm blessed to have this team.
What's our annual budget for EMS?
I think we figured it out in a past meeting, I, I don't have that right off the top of my head, but as Commissioner Dotry pointed out, the county is subsidizing quite a bit.
Looking at other counties, what's their percentage collection rate?
Right in the same area.
Right in the same area, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, and as far as their fees charged, we along the same rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so pretty competitive across the board?
Yeah, that, the fee rate is kind of an interesting process, is, it's established through Medicaid and Medicare, and regardless of how much you charge, there's gonna be a standard payment that people are gonna make, and again, that's across the board in healthcare, you see that with billing. Yes, sir.
Are any of those fees, say, if you're, if you, whatever you're charging, Medicaid's sometimes paying less than that actual cost?
That's correct.
Does that go into that percentage of only 48% paid?
Yes, sir.
Also, okay, so that would be, be some of the reasons, insurance also doesn't cover everything that should be covered, so...
Correct.
It's not just citizens not paying, it's insurance companies only being willing to pay so much.
Absolutely, and I might even go out on a limb to say, that's probably the majority of it right there.
I figured that, okay.
That's other insurance companies as well.
That's right, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you going above and beyond to make sure that citizens feel that, you know, the call, regardless, no matter what, you know, that's big, because, you know, I, I might get in the ass and be like, nah, 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 okay, I'll get there on my own, you know what I'm saying, because I know that is an extra bill, you know what I mean, and some people can't afford it, you know what I mean, some people don't have insurance, they have all kinds of reasons why they don't make a phone call, you know, or whatever, but I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Dave, if you don't mind me chiming in, I've been pulling numbers, their revised budget right now sits at 11.1 million.
Thank you.
Dave, thank you for your compassion.
Yes, sir.
And your team's compassion, and as Commissioner Foster just mentioned, I've known people who haven't called, and they needed to serve, but simply because they're worried about the cost.
Yeah.
And it's, it's sad.
It goes against everything I believe in, but I understand it, you know, three, four, five, six, $700, that, that could break a household.
Exactly.
And I always have to realize that in the process.
But I think we have the right man in the right position.
Thanks, Sata.
It's, it's all the team that's out there in the field right now, I'm a very tiny part of this.
Dave, are we connecting with the Health Department and, you know, other entities that could reach out, you know, in advance, so people do know that if they don't, if they don't, they aren't insured, that there are things available, so that, you know, we, the county won't have to worry about, you know, not covering the cost of, you know, your services, and the people will feel comfortable knowing they have insurance.
Again, this is one of the things that I, kind of attracted me to the Air Methods concept, is the fact that their, their customer service is very good, and it's a monitored customer service, they do a constant QI process, but in that, if a person were to call and say, this doesn't make sense, they're gonna help them navigate through that process, maybe, well, one, they make sense of what the bill is, and then, maybe it's a payment plan, maybe you're gonna pay us 20, $75 a month on this process, or maybe it wasn't filed correctly with your insurance, or, you know, they know the ins and the outs of the process, so again, I, I like that, because our, our patient is the person that sold us our coffee this morning, and they know nothing about medicine, and they know even less about medical billing, now we put them in contact with the experts that can help them navigate the process. So, the Health Department is very good at that, but if we go with this company right here, it's gonna be part of our contract with them. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I have something to say, a few weeks ago, I had a attack of kidney stones, and I just don't, I cannot commend your department enough for the care that I received, and this young man right here, I mean, he even come in and checked on me several times, and when you're sick and you're hurting, that means a whole, whole lot, I mean, and I thank you for that, and your staff just represented himself very professionally, but when I was coming out after being released, I could not, I just did not realize how full the waiting room was of people waiting to see a doctor, I mean, people were standing against the walls because the chairs were full, I mean, and I just don't know how you really keep up with it all, I mean, 22,000 calls a year, that's a lot of calls, and it's increasing 7%?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we need to find you some grant money.
Well, it sounds good to me.
And I, Madam Chair, I'd also say, this man is very persuasive, he, he made me go to the hospital one day when I told him I didn't need to go.
Yes, he did.
When there's something wrong with you, know is, is not in his vocabulary.
No, his first thought is your care.
Yeah, exactly.
We appreciate that.
Well, I think people need to, need to know, and Dave probably ain't gonna like me saying this, but Dave is, and his staff do above and beyond to keep our trucks in the district, to keep them in rotation, because it can stack up real easy at a hospital, and he does more than his job classification or requirements require him to do, him and his staff.
Yes.
And we'll say thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
And also, you know, we mentioned a while ago about the, the units calling in when they were closer and all, it's nothing to hear a unit that knows the trucks are out, and now they have to call in, they're not asking, do I need to stage some word, they 'll call in and say, we're gonna stage you at the fire ground, we're gonna stage you at Belfast Fire Department, I mean, they're staging yourself, I mean, they're, they're a lot of decisions that you would think David's making, the crews is making on their own.
Yes, sir.
You brought up a good point, that staging makes, makes the station a little more dangerous.
I, I work for you all and the citizens, so you tell me the direction we want to go. Commissioner Dotry, Alex is, he's actually the guy that runs Wayne County EMS, he's always watching my back, the question came up, we, following with, with Andrew's assistance, we sent our letter to our current billing company, we had to give them 60 days notification, they received that on October 19th, January 1st is a safe time to say that we've met our obligation of 60-day notice, the notice did say to start that they would stop their billing operations February 1st of 2023, so I, I know you had a question about that, and that's, that's the answer to it.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you. And obviously, this is our effort to improve those collection rates, and that's why we're seeking that approval. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Air Methods, DVA, Superior Healthcare Solutions as our billing company, with approval by our attorneys on the contract.
Do we have approval from the rest of the board? Bye moved.
Alright, public comments.
We do have one person signed up for public comments, Mr. Charles Wright.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Charles Wright, I'm happy to be here, and season, holiday greetings as well. I first like to preference my comments by saying, the Wayne County Board of Elections' Chairman and Director are not aware of my presentation this morning, nor am I officially speaking for that board, but I am a member of the Wayne County Board of Elections. Approximately three months ago, our Director requested presence before the County Commissioners to request a pay raise for the five Board of Election members, which we approved through unanimous vote. She, she was prepared to show comparative data and research findings from other counties, and to highlight the increased challenges now facing both Board members and her staff. The request, as I understood, was approved by the Finance Director, but Board members, was approved by the Finance Director, but the three-member Commissioners' pre-agenda committee did not approve her request to be placed on the agenda for full Commissioners' consideration of her request of budget amendment. As I understood as well, the monies are available in her budget. She was later informed via email, quote, "Any pay raises must be considered during the budget process, we will be glad to look at them in the next budget cycle." I come before this board and others for many years, and I've always asked before my, before presenting myself as a pragmatic man, is the action fair, equitable, with or without presidents, and does it represent good governance? Well, my presence here should give you my answer on those items. I ask, at this time, I ask the Commissioner or Commissioners to request the Director of Wayne County Board of Elections be placed on your agenda for the next Commissioners' meeting, hear her precise presentation, then make a motion and proceed accordingly. Once again, I thank you for your time and attendance, and good health, and season greetings. I purposely did not prepare charts and diagrams and statistical data, as I'm known to do, only because I want the Director of Board of Elections to do that. I did dip a little in some figures and research, and all I can say is, the findings was astounding, but here again, I'd like to leave that up to our Executive Director of our Board of Elections, and I thank you for your attention. And I thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Wright, before you leave, I just want to stay for the record. And I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. I had no idea that she had requested to be on the agenda. Secondly, I'd like to say she's done an amazing job, in my opinion, from the time that I've become a county commissioner here. So, thank you.
Well, I would say all five of our board members share that sentiment as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Wright. For the record, you said all five members voted for?
Yes.
Unanimous, right? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would just like to make sure that, at this time, that we acknowledge that the Director would like to come and speak. And hopefully, we can get her on the agenda for the next meeting. I don't know why she wasn't approved. I wasn't a part of that board. I mean, it really doesn't matter at this point. But, you know, I know that there has been issues with getting things on the agenda from that Board of Three, which I technically don't like. But it is what it is right now. I'm trying to find some rules and regulations stating, you know, in our policies and procedures where that's what, that's the procedure that we're going through. I haven't found it. I have found some things in the school of government. But I would like to make sure that citizens and department heads and everybody's being heard by this full board. I think it's kind of biased. And I don't think, I mean, the majority is fine, and that's the way that it's stated. But I don't understand how that's correct for a seven, seven-member board. So I would like to make sure that she's placed on the agenda for the next meeting, if that's what she chooses to do.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
First of all, there was not a request for the Director to be on the agenda. There was a budget amendment that was in our package. We looked at that, and it was a unanimous approval of those at the agenda meeting that since it was an item that should have been presented at budget time, that we recommended that we not approve or put the budget amendment in the package and to refer back to that department as they, that they needed to make that request at budget time because it was a salary matter. But at no time has the Director asked to be on the agenda, and it being refused. She did not ask to be on the agenda. It was simply a budget amendment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't know the particulars, I wasn't there. But I know as a board member, I've asked for several things to be on the agenda that wasn't on the agenda with the past chairman. So I don't know what was going on with the Director and asking or whatever. But at this time, if she had money in her budget, and it's not a problem with finance, that would just be, seem to me, a simple budget amendment and not some grand thing that would have to be discussed during budget time. I don't know who made that call, who made that decision. But I just don't see the problem with that. So still, at this point, we need to figure out how we should handle this matter appropriately in any other matters going to that board as far as being on the agenda or ask something. Because it seems that, you know, it's a limited amount of people making that decision. And those decisions might not always be right, you know? So I would like for those matters to be discussed a little more by all seven of us, if possible. But it's something for the future.
Madam Chair, I also think that, you know, we just, we just went through election season. And I like to hear a report on, you know, what has happened in that department as well. So I think, you know, it can, it can be twofold.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for counsel. Is this something, since it's pertaining to personnel, that we can discuss in closed session?
If it is personnel matter, yes, that could be something.
But it's not paid personnel?
Pay, pay of personnel is not something that you can.
Okay, so I just don't want to get in trouble. I mean, I was just asking the question.
So this is board, do we have a consensus that the next meeting, if she wants, the Director wants to come in, that it's okay?
Is that something?
If she had requested, we would have put her on the agenda, but she didn't request to be.
Okay, thank you so much.
At least we have no problem.
Yeah, Mr. Crawford, can we do that, put her on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean the twentieth or the thirteenth?
The twentieth. The twentieth.
The twentieth.
All right, is through that. We'll move on to the county managers' report. And I've got a few items I'd like to say. Last week, we had the pleasure of meet, meet officials from the Division of Land and Water Stewardship at a meeting hosted by the town of Seven Springs. That was interesting. And we also had the pleasure of attending the senior center Christmas party at the Maxwell Center. That was very nice. They had a good time. It looked like they were having a good time. We also attended Christmas parades in Mount Olive, Fremont, Goldsboro, and Pikeville over the weekend. They also attended Chair Pierce's swearing-in ceremony last night. Upcoming for the rest of this week, I want to remind you've got the community supporting schools. It's this Thursday at Lantry. It's their annual meeting, the breakfast. Also, you have on Thursday, June eighth, is the employees' Christmas luncheon from eleven to two. On that same day, I'm hosting at eleven thirty at the Maxwell Center, the county managers and assistant county managers from Eastern Carolina Council at the Maxwell Center. And that's at eleven thirty. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. All right, Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to let all the citizens know I enjoyed the parades that I was able to attend. Mount Olive was wonderful. It's always wonderful going through Mount Olive. Pikeville was great, too. I was amazed at how it's growing every year. Goldsboro, you know, I wanted to be on the float, but I had to work. So I was scooping ice cream and just trying my best to, to, to serve my community in that, in that manner. Thank you so much.
We were waiting for a scoop of ice cream.
We saw you in there.
We saw you right there. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Foster.
You know, normally, I don't even say anything during this time. But since Ms. Barber has been elected chair, I just want to first congratulate you. I think you'll do a wonderful job. I don't know if we made history today with the first woman chair, but that may have been something that had possibly could have taken place today. And just touching on what Mr. Wright said, I think as a chair, I think you will do a great job and be fair to all of us, you know? I personally had issues with getting things on the agenda. So I know the struggles and, and the issues that some may have or have had. I've, you know, struggled with that myself, you know? I'm even looking into the legalities of it, you know what I'm saying? When it comes to certain things and not being able to put things on agenda and feel respected as a county commissioner, as, you know, we all have one vote, you know? But once again, I think you're going to do a great job. I don't even think it, I know you are.
Thank you.
No. So, thank you, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
You too. All right, Commissioner Freeman.
First of all, I'd like to echo Commissioner Foster's comments about you, Ms. Barber.
Thank you.
And I'd say, bottomed commissions, I think you're the most qualified person to be chair. Your business knowledge that you bring, your municipal knowledge that you bring to this board is immense. Your negotiation skills are par none. However, having said that, I need a few things from you. I need you to bring some transparency to this board. We need to bring some respect back to this board for the, for the various members in the collusion and backdoor dealmakers, you know? No offense to my Democratic colleagues here, but we have five Republicans. And when I have to find out what's going on within the Republican board members from my Democratic colleagues, I think that's a matter of disrespect. I've spent eleven years serving this party, three and a half as chair, and not have the respect of my fellow board members, I think is a disgrace. So please.
I'm going to try my best, and we're going to work together.
Bring some integrity back to us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Daughtry.
First of all, I wanted to thank all of the management team for their support and help over the past year. Because we did have a very successful year. We were able to weather some very rough spots. But we got through that. We seamlessly changed county managers, as well as the assistant county manager, with no issues at all. So that speaks well of this board having chosen and implemented an assistant county manager some years back. Because that made this transformation from one county manager to the other very seamless. We implemented new financial software. We enhanced employee compensation. We began some major projects, including Fremont Elementary School, Goldsboro Business Campus, the Maxwell Center Hotel. We moved through an extensive planning process for Health and DSS, as well as the jail projects. As well as the completion of most, I think around ninety percent of the Board of Commissioners' goals, especially with today's appointment of our grant writer. I also want to thank each of the commissioners for their support and hard work. Without your commitment and your efforts, Wayne County would not have had such a successful 2022. I look forward to working with Chairman Acock, Madam Chair Acock, and Vice Chairman Gurley as we continue to make improvements for Wayne County. Thank you.
Commissioner Acock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd also like to mention that. Well, Chairman Clerk, I've called it worse. But anyhow, I did, we, the Christmas parade has been mentioned. Saturday was especially special for me. As many of y'all know, I have the honor of carrying our distinct, Mayor of Nahana. He was appointed for one day, but he's been mayor ever since. Mr. Mayor Bruce Maples, he's quite a special person in the Nahana community. And that's one of the biggest kicks that he gets every year is to be, have the privilege of riding in those Christmas parades. And I also like to especially thank the city of Goldsboro for putting us up at the front of the parade. They've supported my effort in helping Bruce a whole lot. And Laura did the same thing to me this year. The lineup sheet says Mayor Bruce Maples, Mayor of Nahana, driven by Commissioner Acock. So that was quite an honor for him and for me. But all of the, all of the parades were great. We've got one to go. We've got next Sunday, we've got Eureka's parade. But since each year, the parades get larger and larger. I was expecting this year we have to have a budget amendment for candy, but I think it'll work without. Also, I did attend the meeting that Chip had mentioned down in Seven Springs. Commend that community for reaching out, trying to get some grant money to make some improvements in Seven Springs. I really don't think the population is going to come back great. But the things that they're wanting to try to accomplish in cooperation with the Clifford New State Park, I think, you know, there's certainly room there to, to help that community. And they're dedicated people. Also, I'd just like to, as Vice Chair for the last year, I'd like to thank the rest of the board. I know we've, as has been mentioned, we might have had some disagreements and all. But all in all, this board does a great job. Most things that we vote on is unanimous. And, you know, once in a while, it's not. But, you know, if, if, if everybody in this world agreed all the time, it would be a dull place to live. So, but I do appreciate the work that everyone did in this past year. And as Commissioner Daughtry said, look forward to working for our new chair and our new vice chair. I don't think we want to worry about what they're thinking because they both of them are pretty good about, you know, letting you know how they feel. But again, congratulations to y'all, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Acock. And my new vice chair, Commissioner Gurley.
Well, first of all, to congratulate Ms. Barber, Madam Chair, being elected chair of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. And I appreciate the confidence in the board and electing me vice chair. We've, we had a, we had a good time on the, in the parades. I've attended all so far. And we've got, like I say, we've got Eureka next Sunday. And then we've got O'Berry Center, I think is on the fifteenth. I think, which is Thursday week, I think. No, Thursday, two weeks. Anyway, we've got that. I did attend the, the meeting in Seven Springs. And I think it opened some of my, some, some people's there that, and some talk has already gone on, on some things that possibly could happen in that area. So that, that meeting was, was, was a good insight on the, on the community there. We had our Highway Seventy Quarter meeting at the Maxwell Center several weeks ago. And I want to congratulate Chris Boyett on being elected the Vice Chairman of the Highway Seventy Quarter Commission. He was in attendance last night at the sheriff's swearing-in. Congratulate the sheriff on another term. Are you going another one after this one? We'll see. So anyway, I just want to wish everybody, I know we've got a couple more meetings, but I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Because we've got a lot of Christmas parties coming up, personal and countywide. So, thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair. I'm glad Commissioner Gurley mentioned the Christmas parade out at Cherry and O'Berry. There were several groups that, before COVID came along, participated in that. And then they, you know, they had to naturally with the clientele out there, they had to, you know, do away with their Christmas parade. But that's, that's one, you know, the trot club I'm in would try to participate in, in the past. And that's one that, it, it took, it gets your heartstrings. It's, there's some of the clientele out there, they're, they're, they're really special needs. And it's a big boost to them, and see the expression on their face. So I encourage anyone that's listening in the community that can participate in that Christmas parade. The staff out there would greatly appreciate it, and, and the patients out there would too. But it's, like I say, that one or two gets your heartstrings. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody. A board is good as the team players that are with the chairman. I cannot succeed without each and every one of you. And I'm going to depend on each and every one of you. And I want you to know I'm always available. I want you to talk to me, express your feelings to me. Tell me what you want to see and how you want us to move forward. Because that's how we're going to succeed. I just feel really honored. I think I am the first woman Republican chairman. Anyway, I don't know if there's ever been a Democrat chairman, but I am the first woman. And I take it with great pride. And I want to thank the staff. Because I'm only going to be as good as my staff as well. You know, it's going to be here to help support this board. And 2023, I hope it's going to be a better year. I hope that we can move forward and continue the success that Commissioner Daughtry mentioned. Because we do have a lot of work to do. And I'm just happy to be a part of it. And I'm happy to make Wayne County a better place to live and for our citizens. And they need a lot of help. And we're in the position to do that. And I pray to God that he gives me the wisdom to help make the right decisions as I move forward. Because I'm going to try my best to do what is right for everyone. So with y'all's help, we're going to make it happen. And that's all I got to say, Mr. Chairman. And that's all I've got to say, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have no closed business, nothing else for closed sessions, so you'll need to recess until December 13th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, we need a motion for that, Mr.? All right, meeting is recessed until December 13th at 9:00.